I've got 3:00 o'clock. If everybody's ready to go, we'll go ahead and get started. My name is Brad Dial. I'm the chairman and current chairman of the Board of the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. This time I'll call our October 30th meeting to order. Would the Secretary of Call roll, please?
Barnes.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Chaplin.
Here.
Cho. Facella. Hannan. Dial.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Our first item is the approval of our agenda for today's meeting. If you would take a look at that. Motion in a second, please.
I move -- go ahead, Dick.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our agenda for today's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then Q. Motion carries. Any audience participation? Anyone from the audience would like to speak? Okay, give me one second and I've got a little something I'm going to read to you here as soon as I look it up because I don't have a copy of it with me strangely enough. You can come right up to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Yep. I have to look this thing up because I keep it somewhere here. Ah, here we go. "If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address. This is an opportunity to make a statement to the Board of Trustees as a whole. We do not answer questions. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. The countdown clock will display your remaining time. You're welcome to go."
All right. Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me the privilege and the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Vaughn Howard. I live at 712 West California Avenue. I'm located in Urbana, Illinois, 61801. Urbana, for those of you who don't know, is spelled U-R-B-A-N-A. It's funny. Yeah, the reason why I'm here today is to address some issues that I had with the bus service. It's really not an issue, but it's just to bring something to your attention, to request something. I noticed when you catch the bus here -- I'm from Chicago originally, so when you catch the bus, you put the money in, you get a transfer. The transfer allows you one ride after that, but it has to be in a different direction. I was curious to find out if an individual puts in a dollar and pays for a transfer, he should not -- he or she should not be restricted on the direction that they go. So, for example, if I get on the bus at Green and Bucy and I go to the Champagne Library to conduct anything, I should be able to use that one ride to get back westbound. If I travel east, I should travel west. I don't think it should be restrictions on if you travel east and west. It should be the one ride that you're granted. It shouldn't be stipulations on how the one ride is used. Also, I noticed that once you put your money in, you get one ride for the transfer. Well, in Chicago, if you pay for a ride, you get two rides after you get on the bus. So, if I get on the bus and put on a dollar, I should be able to travel -- I should get two rides. I don't -- during my research, I was informed that it's -- the bus fare has always been a dollar since its inception. So, I don't know if that can be a price increase by 50 cent or an extra dollar due to pay increases and raises and what have you and stuff like that. Also, I had a concern with the security at the Illinois Bus Terminal. Since I came down here to be a college student in 2012, I have noticed a number of incidents. I took some classes at Parkland when I was a U of I student because it was cheaper. So, I noticed that some fights breaking out in the Illinois Bus Terminal. I noticed alcohol -- alcoholics sitting around, registered sex offenders, the prison people getting off waiting around in the Illinois Bus Terminal. That's fine and dandy. However, my concern was if you have security there during the climate in the society in which we live in where you have random shootings anywhere, churches, schools, Walmart, what have you, the security should at least take a 20- to 40-hour armed security course to be armed with a revolver or semi-automatic. You have State Senator Scott Bennett's office on the second floor. You have the school on the second floor, and you just have random people roaming around on the first floor. You have Amtrak conducting business on the second floor, and they should have armed security. Or even at Carl Hospital, they even have tasers. Tasers, armed security guards, handcuffs or anything. Because when I noticed a few months back when there was a physical altercation, all the security guards had were their bare hands. And it's like that's not appropriate in this day and age, in this society, especially when you have people with concealed carry licenses. We don't know if they're obeying the laws with no firearm signs on the bus. So, guns are everywhere, and it's like sending an armed police officer. It's like training a soldier in boot camp in the military, Marine Corps, Army, Navy SEALs, and say, "Take that heel with your bare hands." So, we don't want to send security in the terminal with their bare hands to remove passengers and depending on the calling of 911 at all times. So, that was another concern. It was the weapons, the security guard safety, the fares, and the -- if it's a pay increase for the passengers, 50 cent to get an extra ride to go three ways, and the restrictions on how that one ride is used. So, this is -- it was only about -- those are my concerns. So, I don't know if you guys need anything else from me.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Any other public comment today?
Seeing none, we'll move on to -- we're going to -- is Ashley going to talk now or we're going to move her to something else?
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Right now. Yep. You're it.
Hi, Vaughn. Thanks for --
Tap that button down there, Ashley, and turn that green light on. There you go.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. My name is Ashlyn McLaughlin. I'm a transportation planner with the Regional Planning Commission, and I am here today to give you an update on our long-range transportation plan. We are required to update this plan every five years. This plan is for 2045, and we've been working with MTD and other area agencies to update the plan over the last two years. And we have been working with an illustrator to try to make our materials more appealing and engaging to the public. So, I'm going to show you what is our overview video to give you a sense of what the plan is and how it gets updated every five years. So, I'll go ahead and start that video.
Every day, over 150,000 people in the Champaign-Urbana region use roadways, bridges, bike lanes, sidewalks, trails, railroads, and the airport to get to where they need to be. Our transportation system has a huge impact on our daily lives and routines, and transportation planning touches on many areas that affect our quality of life, such as safety, the economy, environment, health, and even our social lives. We are the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study, also known as COATs, a program of the Regional Planning Commission. We work with local communities and the Illinois Department of Transportation to coordinate an urban transportation system that accommodates all the ways people and goods move throughout the region. Our role is not to own or maintain any roadways. Rather, we work with the local agencies that own, maintain, plan for, and operate on our roadways to make sure all the different transportation systems work together in a safe and coordinated way. One of our primary responsibilities is to help identify a 25-year vision for the future of transportation in the Champaign-Urbana region. Over the last two years, we have been updating the region's federally mandated long-range transportation plan, known as the LRTP. COATs planners and engineers update the LRTP every five years to forecast how the region's transportation system will evolve over the next 25 years. The LRTP includes short-term, five-year goals as well as longer-term, 25-year goals. This plan looks at the development of pedestrian, bicycle, bus, automobile, rail, and air travel, and identifies transportation projects that can benefit the Champaign-Urbana metropolitan planning area. This planning area includes the cities of Champaign and Urbana as well as the villages of Savoy, Tolono, Bonville, and Mohammed. Because transportation impacts so many different aspects of our lives and our community, we assembled a broad-based steering committee that includes representatives from the municipalities in the planning area as well as other public service representatives from across the region to help guide and oversee the LRTP. We start the planning process by compiling and updating local data relevant to the current transportation system, then involve the public in identifying current strengths and weaknesses in this system. We place special emphasis on connecting with the public so we can produce a plan that is grounded in a shared vision for the future. In 2018, we held over 20 events around the metropolitan planning area to identify transportation priorities for the future. We collected feedback and listened to your suggestions for new bike paths, more lighting for traveling at night, curb ramps to accommodate wheelchairs, and many other ideas. All of this data and input serves as the foundation for developing goals and prioritizing projects for the future. We employ a scenario-planning approach that allows us to evaluate and compare different strategies for achieving our goals. We've developed a suite of interconnected models that project future conditions based on different changes to the transportation network. These models project future conditions such as how many cars, trucks, buses, bikes, and pedestrians will be traveling in the region. And that's just the start. We're also measuring vehicle emission levels, locations of roadway congestion, and the cost of new infrastructure, along with many more metrics. Throughout the scenario-planning and modeling process, we worked closely with the steering committee to refine future strategies and develop the 2045 Vision. This vision incorporates projected population and employment changes, new and emerging transportation technologies, and funding opportunities at the federal, state, and local levels. Some of the strategies identified in the 2045 Vision may require additional funding. However, projects included in the LRTP future vision have an advantage when competing for future grants because they have been publicly reviewed and approved in the course of the LRTP process. Based on the input and analysis, we are excited to present an ambitious and attainable 2045 Vision for the Champaign-Urbana region, building on the region's current strengths and committed to improving safety, multimodal connectivity, economy, equity, and the environment for all residents and visitors. Safety objectives focus on improving infrastructure conditions, reducing crashes, and eliminating transportation fatalities. Multimodal connectivity objectives support infrastructure for walking and biking, boosting public transport ridership, and reducing vehicle miles traveled on local roadways. Economy objectives facilitate transportation access to employment as well as customer and supplier access to businesses. Equity objectives measure access to shared transportation resources for residents of all ages and abilities, with an emphasis on multimodal access for low-income residents. Environment objectives include limiting the expansion of the urban footprint to protect valuable agricultural land, maximizing the efficiency of existing transportation, and maintaining superior air quality, in part by supporting vehicles using alternative fuels. It is not enough to create a 25-year vision and hope that it comes to fruition. To ground the 2045 Vision in reality and track its implementation, the LRTP 2045 includes five-year goals, smart objectives, and data-driven performance measures. These are assessed annually in the LRTP Annual Report Card to measure progress toward long-range transportation goals. The LRTP is one tool to help us create the future we want for our community. Let's work together to start making the LRTP 2045 a reality today.
Okay, so that gives you a bit of an overview of what is in the plan, more or less, and how we accomplished it. So, next, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the plan itself. This year, we have a web-based plan, so we're not producing a paper document. It is all contained in this website. And as you'll see here right now, we are in our public comment period, which is why I'm presenting here today. So, that started on October 23 and goes through November 21. So, people visiting the website can click on these little icons, and it'll pop up with a -- an email message to send to us in relation to whatever section of the document they're next to. So, here in the overview section, this is the homepage. I just wanted to point out this is our planning area. It was shown on the video as well. This is partially determined by the U.S. Census, urban areas, but also determined by our steering committee in terms of what we think will be contained in the urban area within the next 25 years. So, that's why this border also includes Mohammed and some of the non-residential areas around the urbanized area. So, a little overview, we collect existing conditions as a first step of our plan. That's just a lot of data, you know, current data to kind of fill out a full view of our urbanized area and our transportation system. That includes demographics, land use, environment, health, and transportation. And I'm not going to go through each of these sections. I just want to give you an overview of some of the contents. We had a lot of public input on emissions and how the transportation system contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. That's part of our existing conditions report. Next, we have goals which were provided -- or a short overview was provided in the video. Safety, multimodal connectivity, equity, economy, and environment are our broad goals. And then, within each of those sections, we have the overarching goal, which relates to the federal and state goals for the transportation system, as well as specific objectives, data and tools, performance measures, and then strategies and responsible parties. That's for each of our goal sections. And every year, we produce our Annual Report Card, which checks in with all of those goals to see how we're moving forward toward accomplishing them. Next, we have our vision section. That includes future projects, an overview of our modeling suite. We do use a suite of statistical models that were outlined in the video in order to anticipate what kinds of vehicle traffic we'll see on our roadways in 25 years, as well as emissions, crashes we can anticipate, congestion areas, and other things. For future projects here, I'll just point out we have -- this is one of the posters we used in our public outreach. And this gives an overview of all of the regionally significant projects that are included in our plan. So, there's a lot of different priorities for all the different local agencies, but in terms of regionally significant projects that will really impact the area and that could require future funding, we tried to include those in this one poster to illustrate for the public and to local agencies both where those projects are located and how they relate back to all of our different goals and objectives. So, for instance, for MTD, we see here Illinois Terminal Expansion that is still looking for funding, the Hydrogen Fuel Cell Infrastructure Project that will go a long way toward accomplishing our reduced emissions goals. And also, lastly, here we have included a transit hub in downtown Urbana, which is obviously in the very early stages of exploration, but is a long-range goal for the region. And then, last -- also in the vision section, we have some funding information, implementation information. And then, lastly, we outline the public involvement strategies that we employed throughout the two years. So, we collected over 2,000 comments on existing transportation strengths and weaknesses, what people want to see for the future, and also barriers to implementation that people foresee in terms of if we want more people taking transit, what do we need to do to make that happen? What are the current barriers that are preventing people from doing that? The appendix, that's just additional documentation that will be filled in after the plan is approved. So, that is a very broad overview. I'm happy to answer any questions about the long-range plan or about any aspect of the website.
Questions from the board. Linda.
So, that's really interesting because I like to think about future and how we get there. One thing I'd be really interested in, I don't know if it exists, is a 1995 25-year projection to see what we thought back then was going to happen now. Because one thing I'm not seeing on this, and maybe you're considering it, is, you know, it's so easy for new things to come up we never thought of. I mean, who would have thought about Uber? Who would have thought about all these bicycles? I saw one house once that had five on the sidewalk. And then, the other thing I read about and is happening too even in my neighborhood is all the congestion. There was an article about all the congestion in New York from Amazon deliveries. The bridges were being slowed. Parking is non-existent, so they're stopping the streets. So, those are all pretty important transportation items that I don't think you even would have thought of five years ago.
Right.
So, you know, you have modeling based on what we know now. You have like a crystal ball. I guess the good thing is you go five years out, so you have a little more information.
Right.
Any comments on that?
Yeah, no, those are all great questions. So, in our modeling, we do try to anticipate to the extent we can possible things like that we can foresee, for instance, deliveries, for instance, autonomous vehicles and ride share. So, those are things, some of which we can quantify in our models and some of which we can't. So, some of it is more of a qualitative assessment as opposed to quantitative. But in our -- we have a second video that talks about the future, and part of the role is the plan -- of the plan is to get people to try and imagine those scenarios. And so, one thing that we address specifically to deliveries is how other communities are utilizing curb space in new ways. So, while we've transferred some of that space to, you know, outdoor eating areas or bike racks or whatever that may be, we can also use those in other ways that can accommodate ride-share vehicles or urban delivery vehicles so that we can make those urban spaces especially more flexible for businesses and for people not owning cars. So, taking some of that parking space away potentially to make it more accessible to other modes. So, that's one thing. But yeah, those are all things that our steering committee brings up, issues like that all the time, that we try to incorporate in the plan in different ways.
Bruce.
At one time, COATs had planned a ring road around the communities. Is that still in the mix?
So, portions of that have been implemented in different ways where the need was higher. But like conceptually, there is no ring road proposed. There are still sections of that that are proposed to be improved.
That's a change, then.
Yeah, that's a change from the past. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions from the board for Ashley? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Ashley, appreciate you coming by. In my haste to hear Ashley's report, we skipped right over the approval of our minutes from our prior meeting. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes from the September 25 regular board meeting after you've had a moment to assess them.
I move the minutes be approved as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our board meeting minutes from September 25, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Managing Director.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just would like to comment on Linda's question and Ashley's response. Is this your second or third LRTP that you personally have worked on? Second? Okay. So, first of all, I just want to say that COATs, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, is a model MPO across the country. The Federal Transit Administration and the Federal Highway Administration are regularly using and tapping into the local experts and resources that we have working for our Regional Planning Commission that staffs the MPO. So, they're a great team. Ashley and Rita Black and everyone who works with COATs are fantastic. We really appreciate the partnership with them. And then, Linda, what's interesting is they call things like Uber and Lyft disruptors because they come up out of nowhere and they change everything. And the reason they're disruptors is because nobody anticipates them. If we were able to anticipate them, then they wouldn't be disrupting anything. So, while this is looking 25 years out in the future, it is updated every five years. And so, that is the opportunity that we have to insert these disruptive technologies or disruptive services, both positive and negative. And so, they do get programmed in in an iterative process rather than actually casting it out 25 years and saying, you know, 20 years from now, X will be invented and it will have Y impact. Nobody has that kind of crystal ball. But because we're updating it regularly, then we do get those new concepts and ideas inserted into it. All right. Onto the operating notes. Our ridership for this September was 4.4 percent less than September of last year, and that primarily is due to the EMCOR impacts on Wright Street for a good portion of September, three-quarters of September. Wright Street was closed to our traffic altogether, and so our reroutes were two and three blocks away from where they normally were, which is the heart of campus in that area. And so, that had a very dramatic impact on our utilization. Then, toward the end of September, the last week of September, they opened up one lane, and so we were able to go back onto regular route northbound on Wright Street. That helped, but it was only for one week of the month, and southbound trips were still several blocks away. So, we're still feeling the effects of EMCOR, and it is what it is, I guess, but we're getting closer and closer to the end of EMCOR, and it's looking great, and so, woo-hoo. The operating revenue for September was 13.9 percent above September of 2018. The operating expenses were 3.6 percent above September of 2018. And the year-to-date operating revenues are $164,000 above budget, and the operating expenses are $769,000 under budget. And then, the last thing that I want to make sure that I bring to your attention is I had said previously that we were planning on bringing the third and final leg of the Hydrogen Fuel Cell Project stool to you for approval at this meeting. And you probably noted in this board packet that that is not on today's agenda, and that is because we opened up the bids for that. But there was a hiccup in the process of the prime contractors being able to get all the prices from the subcontractors, and so, we only got one bid. And we decided that that was an opportunity that was ripe for protest, and so, we just decided to head off all the protests and say, "We're going to open this up back again for just a couple of weeks. Everybody has most of the work done for the proposals, and they can just wrap it up and put the bow on it and get it turned around back to us in two weeks." So, at the next board meeting, we'll bring the action item for the award of that contract. This is for the facility modifications of the maintenance department. So, with that, I will take any questions through page 41.
So, we had additional bidders that were prepared to bid. They just didn't have all the information in a timely fashion, so they were unable to really pull it together at the last minute. Accurate?
Exactly right.
Okay. The other thing I would mention that I failed to mention as we started, we do have a new board member today. Want to introduce Phil Facella to everyone. He'll be replacing Jim, who moved out of town, or I guess he's sort of moved out of town. I don't know if he really moved or --
Yeah.
Yeah. I think he moved.
He's still keeping something here, though, I think. So, regardless, he's not going to be here full-time anymore. So, welcome, Phil. Thank you for your participation.
Question.
Question, Bruce.
Monthly operating revenues went up quite a bit, 13.9 percent. What was that? When the ridership went down, the revenues went way up.
Yeah, just as a reminder, our revenues do not track very closely to what the ridership is, primarily because the vast majority of our revenue is prepaid. So, we pull in very little money at the cash box. So, somebody paying a fare at the door, that's less than 5 percent of our revenue comes in through the door that way. So, there's very, very little impact to what's happening with ridership. And then, in addition to that, the revenue will -- I'm not seeing my sheet right here, but the revenue will be adjusted month-to-month because of our accrual method of accounting. And so, our university contract went up this year, this fiscal year, and so, there are things like that that get adjusted throughout the year, and so, you'll see that show up occasionally.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Carl Dick.
On page 26, Carl. The last two lines, there's some big numbers there. I wonder if that's just a matter of timing. Let me see.
Page 26?
26, yes. The Budget Analysis Report.
Okay.
That's a total.
So, tell me, point out exactly where --
The last line, we were 112.97 percent different on that last line. Is that just a timing situation or?
That is --
So, the actual year-to-date is minus 615, and last year's was 367.
Yes, but that 112 percent is this year's relative to the budget, not last year's. So, primarily, Michelle, please interrupt me if I'm heading down the wrong road, but I think that that is -- net surplus is we're looking at depreciation and physical assets. And so, again, that is a depreciated -- And so, again, that is a depreciated number that is, it's going to change month-to-month, and so by the end of the year, we're going to be pretty close to where we're budgeted. But on a month-to-month basis, that's actually not the best way to look at this. It's better to look at it over a longer period of time, a 12-month period of time. Michelle, do you want to, do you want to bail me out?
Well, I was glancing through. That bottom number is made up of so many different changes between the revenues and the expenses and line-by-line, and so I was trying to quickly find the one thing that made up that number, but generally, in those cases, it's a combination of several different things. And especially when you're talking, I will be more prepared to answer year-to-date questions in the future. Generally, we concentrate on what happened last month. I've got all kinds of information if you want to know what happened last month, but we can find out exactly what makes up that difference. But Carl was correct. That 112 is comparing to the budget, and historically, we compare year-to-year.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Carl right now? So, I'll just comment, both of those questions were great questions, and I think unless people didn't receive the email that I sent, I asked for board members if they had questions pertaining to this document, to please send those to staff so they can prepare an answer so they would be ready for these kind of answers, because I'm pretty confident that they don't know all of this and the ins and outs in this. But to have a little lead time in the future, it'd be a good idea for the, for board members to do that. All right. No other questions on Carl's report. We'll move to our action item, which is Resolution 2019-2 on page 42. And that is our property tax levy payable in 2020. And Carl, you want to give us a report on this?
Sure. I will set this up very similarly to how it's been set up the last three years or so. While we are in the midst of the hospital properties being in a tax exemption or non-tax exemption lawsuit with the county and the Illinois Department of Revenue, we have a variable that we don't know the answer to, and we won't know an answer to until that works its way through the court system. And so, what we have been doing the last couple of years is preparing a levy that would accommodate the additional taxable properties if they came onto the tax rolls. I don't anticipate that they will be coming onto the tax rolls this, this revenue year, but as sure as shooting, if we decide to assume that they're not going to, that will be when it happens. And so, what we have talked about the last several years and this year included is that we would set the levy at a level that if that, if, if those lawsuits are resolved this revenue year, year, excuse me, revenue year, then we are prepared for that. Because with the property tax extension limitation law, commonly known as tax caps, once those properties come onto the tax rolls, it is only in the initial year that they come onto the tax rolls that a taxing authority may include them in the equalized assessed valuation. Year two and forever in the future, they can never be considered, and so the taxpayers will never benefit from that taxable property being, being included into, in the levy. Phil, I see the expression on your face. Let me address what I believe is your question. So, we're proposing that the levy be set at 19.91%. That is not an increase to the individual taxpayer's taxes. That is the size of the levy that will accommodate those, those properties should they become taxable. It's, an analogy would be if, if the, if the tax, if the EAV, the equalized assessed valuation, were equal to a gallon of water, and we set the levy at a half a gallon, then that, that other half a gallon spills over and goes down the drain and can never be captured or utilized by the taxing authority again. And so, what that means is, as expenses grow, revenue won't grow with those expenses because that money is always lost, and so a higher tax burden, one of two things will happen as time progresses. Either there's a burden, a larger burden on taxpayers, or services have to regularly be cut because revenue can't match expenses. But if the, if the EAV is, is a gallon of water and we set the levy at two gallons, that gallon of water will fit in the container. But at no point does anybody, does Phil, who pays taxes, you won't pay more in taxes because the gallon, the container is set at two gallons rather than half a gallon. It's just that the district will be able to utilize the entire gallon EAV, if I didn't completely lose you with my metaphor there. So, just to, as an example, in 2016, we set the levy at 25%. The actual increase to a taxpayer was seven-tenths of 1%. In 2017, we set the levy at 29.43%. The actual increase was 2.1%. Last year, we set it at 21.69%. The actual increase was 1.9%.
That's because the anticipated, the national anticipated...
Is your microphone on?
No. That's because the anticipated inclusion of new properties in the tax rolls did not occur.
It's because, yes, this questionable property, the hospital properties, that did not happen. And, and as I said, I don't anticipate that that will happen again this year, but it could. I mean, we could wake up tomorrow morning and read the newspaper and they'll have made a decision. That's not going to happen, but you know, in theory, that could happen. And so, all this is, is setting that container at a level that it will, that it will hold the EAV if those properties become taxable.
Are you ready to take any questions at this point?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, actually have Linda go first because she was, go ahead.
Well, I run into this every year, and it's so complicated that it seems like, oh my gosh, they're giving so much money. But I don't remember exactly, but my house is built on 360,000, and it seems like part of wanting to do taxes under 200 million, 150 million, something like that. So, this increase might be worth a lot of dollars. So, because I know we have some recoveries in the past, we see, oh my gosh, they're doing a replacement to actually doing something. So, they didn't have an idea really about what they're looking for, but also, they weren't clear on what the impact was on there. So, so that's another part of this is the impact in the legal is, they, nobody wants to pay taxes, okay? They keep pushing up these, these service regulations and the costs, we continue to go a little bit. But the main reason they're just loving is because there are millions of dollars out there in the tax revenue that we could gain if we set the levy.
That is all correct, and so just to expand a little bit on that last part of what you said, in terms of that money that can be gained, that money that is gained is the revenue that keep, the growth of that revenue keeps up with the growth of expenses. We have, you know, almost 400 employees, and they all get raises, cost of living increases, fuel costs go up, health insurance costs go up, et cetera. And so, if we keep service levels at the same level year in and year out, costs will still increase. And so, this, you know, 1.9% increase of last year is significantly less than what the actual costs in the expenses were. Now, we have other way, we have other revenue sources besides just property taxes, so overall, we, we keep, we keep fairly level there. So, I just want to expand on that because it's not always, it doesn't mean that there's always going to be new service relative to it, although if the proper, if the hospital properties came in, that would be a different infusion of revenue that could result, that would likely result in additional services for the taxpayers of the community.
Phil? Go ahead.
I do appreciate your explanation, and I'm not intending to create dissension in my first meeting. I do believe that we owe the taxpayers some modicum of discussion before approving this levy, a 19% increase is a substantial increase. And it's not that I'm against any sort of an increase at all. I do believe the tax cap law foresaw the growth of revenues and allows for some minor increases year over year. It's also not, not that I'm unfamiliar with the Illinois Property Tax Code. Purchasing tax debt is most of what I do day-to-day, so I understand the property tax code in and out. So, basically, the rationale for this levy increase is that if Mercy Hospital and Carl end up back on the tax rolls, that will increase the EAV of our district. And so, if we were to keep our levy at the current level, it would be extended over a much larger EAV, and individual tax bills that would be sent out to property owners would actually be lower than they were this year if that were to happen. Now, when I drive through the community over the last few years, I've seen many homes, businesses with signs in the yard, and those signs will say, "My family pays Carl's share of taxes." Now, the decision before us is if this increased in assessed value were to occur, and I think at some point it very well might, whether we ought to maintain our current levy now extended more broadly to give those families relief on their property tax bills on their rent, because that gets passed through three or four, sometimes five or six months of rent, go to pay taxes in this community. So, when people come into these chambers and complain to city council about unaffordable housing, a portion of that, albeit a small portion, is our responsibility. And if every taxing district were to go out and do what we are proposing to do today, when Carl gets back on the tax rolls, these families would see no relief. I know we're a drop in the bucket, but if the townships, if the cities, if the school districts were to all come out, if public health were to all raise their levies to try to pick up these tax dollars, then, and it's not that the money is going down the drain. I don't believe that giving a single mother 10 more dollars in her pocket is money down the drain. I believe that we operate with the consent of the governed, and if we pass this up, it's not that we can never get it back. We have to go to the voters and do a referendum. If we think, hey, we need $3 million to do a project, we can referendum that. We can go to the people we govern and say, will you, do you agree with us? Will you give us the money? And if we don't think that they're willing to give us the money, we need to question what it is that we do as an organization. I, I just feel very strongly about this. I think we have to give some other explanation besides thwarting the intent of the state legislator in passing to tax caps before we just raise a levy with no intent to use the money. If you give me a project, give me a project that says, hey, we're going to need $2 million a year in debt service to finance this project, and this project is going to benefit taxpayers more than that money in his or her pocket, I'll vote for this. But if we just say, well, we want the money just in case we come up with something good, because otherwise, these schmucks are going to waste it. That's, that's not the democratic process, and that's not what I'm here to do. So, thank you.
Margaret.
Well, one of the things that I think this money is used for that I think is very important is to have money for local matches. Our MTD people are just super at getting grants, and you hardly get any grant at all without some local match. I read earlier this year that the city of Bloomington had to turn away $4 million worth of grants because they couldn't come up with the local match. To me, that's criminal. Think of what that money could be used for, to improve the service or, you know, the infrastructure or whatever. So, yeah, I, we need, we need to have some money for a local match. I think that's almost as important as the others.
Additional questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve this item.
So, move.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call.
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Cho?
No.
Anan?
Yes.
Dial.
Yes, the Resolution 2019-2 is approved. That is our only action item for our meeting today. Our next meeting is a, for the next project, Public Workshop. That'll be Wednesday, November 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 over at Illinois Terminal on the fourth floor. And our next actual board meeting will begin with a public hearing on the tax levy and be followed with the regular Board of Trustees meeting, and that'll be December 11th. So, we're doing a joint November-December meeting, and that'll be December 11th at 3:00 o'clock right here in the city council chambers. Any other communications from the board members or any input? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
We are adjourned. Thank you.